Eric, would you do the pledge and Mike, would you do the invocation, please, sir?
Certainly.
Yes, let's see.
Steve, you want to?
No, okay.
Right.
Eric, ready? All right, let's all rise. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father which art in heaven, dear and fathers, we come to you tonight and we come together as a board to do the best that we can for the city of Mount Pleasant. Dear and Father, also pray for our nation. And just pray that dear and the Father, that you will always be in the center of everything that goes on. And help us tonight, as I say, to do the best for the city that we can, for asking in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jeremiah. All right, roll call, please, ma'am.
Bill White.
Here.
Jackie Granby.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Here.
Eric Parkey.
Here.
Ms. Alderson.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
No, she is here by virtue of the.
The. Uh, and I just want to remind everybody, this is our first night that we're going to be streaming live uh, for our meeting and if everybody does not mind, please make sure that you speak as directly into a microphone as you can. That way we can get it recorded. Uh, um, thanks, Michael Haywood, for all the work you've done to get us to where we can, so this is nice thing. Yeah, good thing. So, number four, approval correction of minutes from prior meetings. We got two sets, the study session of December the 10th and the regular meeting of December the 15th. If you've had an opportunity to review, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the study session of December the 10th, 2020, and the regular meeting, December the 15th, 2020.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Have a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Awards, presentations, appointments. A is Representative Scott Sepicki and Kate received a text just before the meeting saying that they were still working on the education bills in Nashville, and he would not be able to be here tonight. Uh, we're going to schedule him for February.
I put that we understand we'll see him February 16th at 6:00 p.m.
Fantastic. Uh, B, a certificate of compliance for 4-6 is liquor.
And that, um, background check came back with no problems whatsoever. And, uh, mayor has signed it and it does need one other signature. I'm going to leave it here for Ms. Granberry to sign as well. They want two from the government to sign it.
Okay. All right, do we need a motion or anything on that?
I think it just needs to be in the minutes. What do you?
Cory, thoughts?
I think a motion to approve.
Okay.
Okay, it's, let's go ahead and do that then.
Yeah, just that way we know we're covered.
Approve the certificate of compliance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I'm not a drinker, but I'll make a motion for a certificate of compliance with the 4-6 is liquor store.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. I'm not a drinker either, but I'll say. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. C, Mount Pleasant Beer Board, and Kate has very thankfully provided me with the names that she jotted down and knows that for the beer board will be David Workman, William Bryson, and Jimmy Hines, and each of these folks have agreed to serve again.
Yes, it's one year term.
One year term. Do we need to do these individually?
Not together.
Okay, can do them together. All right, next we have Mount Pleasant Communication Committee.
Well, you do all the beer board together. Each board together.
You're appointing that, right?
Yes.
And then are you going to ratify it today?
That was mine 10. So we can do it all?
All beer board together.
Yeah, I do need four.
We have to do each alphabet separate, all right?
Okay, now I got you. All right, Mount Pleasant Beer Board, again, David Workman, William Bryson, and Jimmy Hines.
Move to accept those.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mount Pleasant Communication Committee. Um, John Hatcher, Jason, um, Freddie Walker, Milton Knowles, Sarah Hines, Lacey Howard, Ashley Alexander, Trevor Brewer, Fernando Carvalho. Then that is Fergie, isn't it?
Yes. Uh, and then if that's Ms. Granberry, she was going to see, have a possible another name for Ann Gaines. Uh, I'm not sure if, if she does or not, but yeah, that's Fergie.
Okay. Any questions?
A motion to approve the Mount Pleasant Communication Committee from the names that Mayor White presented.
Second. Got a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Hello, Ms. Granberry.
Were you able to come up with another name for Communications Committee? If not, we can do it next month.
Yeah, I'm sure it's okay with them.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
So we're just one short and we'll do it next month.
And Ms. Granberry, I, as I reminded everybody, we are now live streaming video, so when you speak, try to make sure you kind of point towards your mic.
And Representative Sepicki could not be here, so he'll be here in February.
In February. All right, next we have, uh, the Mount Pleasant Historic Zoning Commission. Uh, the two that will be going back on will be Frank Feinstein and Vice Mayor Granberry. Entertain a motion.
Move to accept those things.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Mount Pleasant Planning Commission. We have two as well here, uh, Douglas Marshall, and again, Vice Mayor Granberry. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the Mount Pleasant Planning Committee.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mount Pleasant Recreation Commission. We have Louima McWilliams, Misty Grooms, Lindsey Howell, Larry Patton, and Vice Mayor Granberry.
I'm going to let, uh, um, Willie Daly do that, I mean Willie Alton.
Ms. Willie Alderson, did you hear that?
No, sir, I didn't hear.
Uh, Vice Mayor Granberry would like for you to take her place on the Recreation Commission.
That's fine.
Great.
I'll do it.
Good. Great. All right, thank you very much. So we'll replace Vice Mayor Granberry with Commissioner Alderson.
There you go.
Do we have a motion?
Move that we accept the Recreation Commission members.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a number of seconds, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, number six, completion review of unfinished business from prior meeting. First, we have ordinance 2020-1060. This is a public hearing and a final reading. An ordinance to amend ordinance 2020-1055, set ordinance approving the revenues and expenses of operating and maintaining departmental functions of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2021, providing an effective date.
And Mayor and Commissioners, uh, in your packet was a bullet point list, uh, that is dated, uh, the meeting date in December, but, uh, the bottom four uh, have been added since first reading. That's the drug fund, updating the computers and equipment in the police vehicles. We talked about briefly at the study session. That's 7,500. Uh, the codes expenditure from 2020 fiscal year, just carrying that over, which is 2,940. The safety grant where we purchased the cones at 3,600, and then the property safety grant where we did the security cameras, doors, locks. That was $8,000. Um, and those are the only changes since the first reading.
Okay.
And then the next time you'll have a budget amendment in front of you will be May, the very last of the fiscal year.
Right. Any questions from the commission? This is a public hearing and the final rating, anyone in the audience care to speak? Please let the minutes reflect, no one wanted to. All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion in favor ordinance 2020-1060 to amend ordinance 2020-1055 as you presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. B, ordinance 2020-1061, again, this is a public hearing and the final reading. An ordinance amending water and sewer rates and charges for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, is set forth in Schedule A, section, section 18-125 of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code.
And Mayor and Commissioners, we talked about this briefly at the study session. A lot of this is going to be to address the Mount Joy Waterline Project. And we're going to be doing a, a rate study. I did reach out to MTS today, did not get a phone call back to just get an idea of the timing and, and some of the stuff that we talked about as far as the, the way the world looks at rate studies when MTS doesn't. Um, but otherwise, we are increasing the outside the city rate by $2, changing the deposits, so we're not negatively impacting, uh, folks' credit when they apply. And then we're also increasing the tax for outside the city rate. But we do plan on coming back to you hopefully within the next six months for educated decision on where the rates need to be to cover all the outside the city rate.
Right. Again, I want to remind everybody, this is just outside the city rate, so.
This has nothing to do with sewer rates.
Only water.
Only water.
But I mean, it just says sewer rates in there.
Yeah, it's water and sewer, but we only change.
I just want to make sure, you know.
Yeah, when you look at your draft, the, the changes are in red and they're only in water.
Yeah, I mean, I know that, but I want the citizens to know it's only water.
Yeah, that's right, it's only water.
Yes.
That is correct.
And the deposit.
Right.
All right, again, this is a public hearing, anyone in the audience care to speak? Please let the minutes reflect that no one offered to. Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion in favor of ordinance 2020-1061 as presented.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Uh, that takes care of all of our ordinances. Monthly report from.
And we've got, uh, C there, we've got the parks and greenways.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Uh, ordinance 2020-1062, again, this is a public hearing, final reading. An ordinance to establish rules and regulations for the parks and greenways of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
And Mayor and Commissioners, we've talked about this, this is to have consistent rules with all the parks, and once this is approved, we'll be making signs, and all the signs will be the same at each of the parks.
Nice, nice.
Make a motion that we.
Uh, again, this is a public hearing, would anybody care to speak? Please let the minutes reflect that no one cared to. Commissioner Granberry?
Make a motion that we pass ordinance 2020-1062.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Tried to get a hell of myself a little bit, man. Uh, number seven, monthly report from Mayor. We were talking about this prior to the meeting. Uh, we've got a, a new company coming in, uh, that is Veritas Guitars. Very high-end custom guitar maker. Uh, they're going to be occupying the old Ripley Auto Parts building. Uh, they've been in town. Uh, Jason is in this audience and has met with them as well, and complements each other's business. Uh, so I think it's nothing but a positive. Um, so that was good to see. Mount Pleasant High School has a new football coach, which was introduced last Thursday.
Kit Hartsfield.
Kit Hartsfield, he originally from Lawrence County. And boy, he comes with a resume. Blackman High School, which is probably, is it 6A?
Yeah.
And has managed to get them in some pretty good, pretty good postseason games, so, uh, that's all I really have, I just, good news. To start the year off with.
That is good.
All right, number eight, monthly financial and budget report, please, ma'am.
Those are reports that, um, we will be starting, saying the finished equipment comes in, there has been a little bit of a delay because we're waiting on the equipment to come in to, uh, convert to, well, uh, roll for our online payments. Instead of going through a third party, we'll actually be going through local government. So therefore, the, uh, the payments and the data that's out there will be real time. Versus of now, the way it's done at midnight, they download the data, and so anything from that point to the following day is not like that. So it's basically a day over. With this, we'll also be able to take phone payments. We get a whole lot of requests for that, but with our phone current system, we're just not able to, uh, facilitate that at this point. But when we go to this new system, they will be given an 800 number that they can call to make online, or to make over the phone payments. And we think that will support, will help our little customers and what meeting they need, and also with this COVID and all that we, you know, I've gone through. We've had a lot of learning, learning session for everybody. And we have been able to see that that is, um, that is an important service that is needed. Um, also, we have, uh, we have submitted all our expenditures to TNCAMs. To date of the 73,000 we have been allotted, we have received 67,144 dollars. Um, we still have several reimbursements that we had to send them some more documentation. And, um, so we expect to receive that. As for the $10,000 for FEMA, we really don't think we'll be getting anything from them. Um, we submitted everything, but we just don't think that they're going, that they're going to come through on that. But we did get the 73,000, the, the TNCAMs. And, um, then one thing I did want you to notice, so if you looked at your last month's financials and compared them to, uh, to the last month, for December from 2019 versus December of 2020, property taxes were way down this year. The reason being is we have, oh, one large company that takes, gets all of the payments that people make through their escrow. We normally receive those payments from that company with all those escrow payments. We usually receive them December 30th, 31st. We just received them last week. So they were, uh, delayed. So that's going to make your December versus January, if you compare them to last year, look a little off. But that is the reason, because that is about $150,000. Um, check, and we have, they've been working on that today, get those posted. The, um, as for the expenditures, we're just about where we should be. Um, the, the, the only exception is, um, State Street Day and Water and Wastewater, both of those have the, uh, those large projects in process. I have any, any questions?
Any questions from anybody?
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Loretta. Mike, you want to comment anything about the power company? I mean, this thing is a humming machine.
Well, I guess, you know, I guess a lot of it you have to say is thankful for industry, there's a lot of it.
Yeah.
And then plus, you know, we get a, quite a bit back on, from TVA for this partnership that they have.
Right.
And it, it, it makes a lot of difference, huh? I mean, it's, you know, that's what I say when I go to that meeting. It's unreal, you know, what it makes now compared to what it made several years ago. It's, it's, you know, I'm sure y'all can, y'all can tell.
Yeah. But, uh, I, I think, I don't think we give that department enough recognition at times. I know they were up there on North Main Street putting in a new poll, and man, they were, they, they do some great work.
No, we have, they have a good.
Great teamwork with them.
Yeah, we really do, and thanks to everybody for that, because it is very important. All right, uh, with that, we'll entertain a motion to approve our, uh, monthly financial and budget report.
So move.
Have a motion, do we have a second? We got a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report from City Manager.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, Mayor Commissioners, make sure that you understood, over the last month, we have had quite a few employees, uh, out with COVID hospitalized and, um, uh, sent home with oxygen, so hopefully every, everyone's going to be okay, but we definitely in last month were really impacted with it. And Loretta didn't mention, because she probably doesn't want to think about it, but some of the rules that they are creating that we have to, to, to do because of all the money, uh, getting reimbursed for sick leave and things like that. We even have to put things on people's W2s, how many days they were out due to COVID. It's creating more work for the finance office, and she has been attending some webinars to know exactly what to do and not to do. It's kind of crazy. Uh, so we were supposed to have today here a film crew filming Mount Pleasant for the Nashville's big backyard, and they got caught up in a couple other cities, and they've rescheduled it till next week. So they're going to feature lots of different industries, what we're doing downtown, what we're doing in Parks and Rec, and a few other things. Um, and that'll be next week, so maybe we'll see it by the time we have our next meeting.
I need to get my class to be a part of that.
Okay, we need to.
Talk later, but.
Okay, and we just need to, uh, hook up with Donna on that, that would be great. They, I know they're going to the schools, so we just need to, we just need to make sure that they get you in on that.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
Just to see that.
Okay. We don't need a motion on that one.
No, sir, thank you.
Yes, sir, for the COVID, but I do appreciate the extra work, you know, Loretta, that you put in.
There's probably still more we don't even know about yet.
Sign, we got to remember she's the one, HR has a lot of work going into that.
Yeah, for sure.
All right, special reports from other city departments or committees, wastewater liaison report, Barge.
Yes, uh, went over this briefly at the study session. We can pretty much remove the wastewater treatment, um, plant improvements for the headwork. That is complete, and we're already applying for another county grant there. The sewer trunk line rehabilitation is ongoing, but they did run into some pipe that was, uh, in such bad shape it couldn't be encapsulated, so they have to repair it before they can cover it, and they're working on that. That's what is referred to as the point repairs being completed. Uh, Rainy Street Sewer Improvements, uh, they are nine, the, the engineers drawings are 90% complete. And, uh, Keith McCafferty met with Barge on that, and I think we're, we're right where we need to be on that, so we're moving right along for that. Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvements are also 90% complete there, but we have not been able to schedule a meeting because we want our plant operator at these meetings to make sure everybody's on the same page, that we agree with what the engineers are recommending. Better put that off a couple times, and hopefully we can have that meeting, uh, shortly. And pretty much the same story for the last wastewater treatment plant improvement, that, you know, we're, we're where we need to be with the engineers, have that, have 90% of it done. We just want the public works staff to be able to weigh in on where we are with everything. So moving right along, spending money, but that's what we're supposed to be doing.
That's right. That's right. Anything on gas?
Yes, on gas, just want to just tell you that, uh, we're working on the, um, um, the annual review that we do for gas. We're working on the gas loss report, so you'll get that information in the next month. And also want to let everybody know that there is a very large increase in natural gas costs. None of it comes to the city. We're passing on the cost to all of our commercial, residential, and industry users. But what we're told is the industry hasn't raised their rates in a very long time, and this increase is necessary to cover infrastructure needs that they have. And people will not see that until they get a February bill. It's, it's effective in January for 2021, and, and some of these are 50 to 70% higher. It's a very large increase. I just want you aware of that in case you get complaints.
Yeah, you need to be prepared.
Just make sure that you understand that the city's not getting any of the increase. That's all I had on that.
No, I have, that does not require a motion or something.
No.
Okay. Anybody got any questions about either? All right, not having any? All right, number 11, new business. Resolution 2021-1. Resolution of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, to approve a new professional services agreement with Loos Designs for planning services, engineering services, and stormwater review services.
Mayor and Commissioners, we already have an agreement with Loos Designs. There was a slight increase in a few of their rates, really not much at all. This, uh, new agreement can go up to three years, and either party can cancel it at any time, but obviously we use them a lot for our, our planning and, and, and plan review, and been, been very pleased with their work.
Worked with them for a couple of years, and they do really good work. Any questions? Having none, entertain a motion.
We accept 20, that, 2021-1 as presented.
All right. We have a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. B, resolution 2021-2. A resolution authorizing the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, to participate in public entity partners' property conservation grant program.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, we've already received this grant, so just asking you to acknowledge that, um, we, we have this grant coming in. This is what we use to pay for the security doors and more cameras around, and, uh, it was also part of your budget amendment as well.
Any comments?
I'd just say that that's something that's been long overdue.
Yeah. Yep.
I agree.
I will agree totally. All right. Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution 2021-2 as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a number of seconds, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. C, resolution 20-21-20, 21-3. A resolution of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, approving an amendment to its cafeteria plan under Internal Revenue Code, Section 125.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is commonly known as a flexible spending account that we allow employees to participate in, to set money aside tax-free to pay for medical expenses. And we are simply, if you look at the resolution, adopting what was passed in the Consolidated Appropriations Act 2021, where people are allowed to change their deductions, they're given more time, their carryover has changed, and we're just adopting the language right out of the act that we have to adopt since we participate in that. Anything else on that?
Man, I thought we was going to get some food.
Yeah. Not happening.
Not going to happen.
A different kind of cafeteria.
Yeah. It is a nice plan for the employees to have, though.
And it, it, it does allow, uh, more flexibility than ever has been in the cafeteria. There was the one, the big thing is that of cafeterias always being used or lose it, and with this, um, amendment, um, through, I think it's 2022, that, um.
For 12 months, yeah.
Yeah, that they can carry it over. So if you don't, you don't need it, you're not going to lose it, you're going to carry it over to the next year.
That makes it better, that makes it do it.
Yeah, it gets you where you don't just lose that money, yeah. Those are great plans, though, I can tell you.
Appreciate you all doing that also.
Yep.
For our employees.
Absolutely. All right, any comment? Having none, entertain a motion.
Motion in favor, resolution 2021-3 as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. D, approval of flipper truck bed.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, this is the sanitation truck that will allow us to have one man operating the truck, and it will pick up the, um, the ca, container and empty it and get the, the employees off the back of the truck. It's a serious safety issue we've all been concerned about. And because of the, uh, bond interest rate being so, so low, we're going to use that money, but we're going to pay it off as quickly as we can, we can. Absolutely not more than 10 years, and hopefully five, and get that paid for. So that's, uh, 221,764 dollars.
I applaud them for looking at this, the safety is number one with this. And number two, we had a lot of discussion about this, not a lot, but a good amount of discussion about this in the work session. And the fact that right now we've actually got four employees running that for safety purposes.
Hmm. And, and we have not filled vacant positions so that when the two men that are on the truck come down, there's, there's, there's.
They've got somewhere to go.
Plenty of work to do, yeah. And that's part of the reason we feel we can pay this off so quickly, that, because we're going to have actually two employees left.
That and the fact that we're no longer, as a city, I hope, going to be financing trucks for 40 years that aren't going to last 40 years.
Oh, no, not going to do that.
Again.
And this is a state bid.
Yeah, again, this is something we've talked about for, for a few years, you know, and thankful it's come to pass.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We finally got ourselves in a position and bond rates are in our favor. Yeah, been a big way. Again, they're low as they've ever been since World War II. All right. Any discussion? Having none, entertain, entertain a motion.
Do we accept the, uh, flipper truck bid?
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
We got a number of seconds? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. E, approval of sweeper truck bid.
Mayor Commissioners, this is also a state bid and, um, it, it, it is a little bit higher than we shared with you at the study session because the price we had was on a demo and the demo has been sold. So it, it went up about $7,000 to $160,000. And this is something that we feel like, um, we are contributing to our own storm water problems because we're not cleaning the gutters, uh, the curbing and, um, and taking care of some of the problem that's out there on the streets. Again, this is something that we think that we can pay for in a shorter period of time, but it, it will not go past 10 years. I'm hoping it's five years or less. Same, same scenario we're paying for with the low interest bonds.
And again, on this, Kate and, uh, I know Kate and, and others did some work and I, work and I applaud them for it. We looked at this and even went out and looked at if we took this out and let somebody else do it for us, it was not going to be financially feasible. This way we're going to own it and at the end of a period, we're going to own this truck. That's right. That's right. So I, again, I think there was that because we looked at a lot of different options before we just decided to spend $160,000.
Yeah, we actually had, one of you all remember, we purchased, we, we got for free through the military and it was really pretty, but it didn't work.
It didn't work. It's okay, y'all guys have done well on the other stuff. Thank you. Very much. All right, uh, any other comments? Having none, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the sweeper truck bid.
All right, we have a motion? Do we have a second? Got a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. F, relocate disc golf to Gardenia Park.
Mayor Commissioners, we talked about this at the, the study session and Bedford did present this to his recreation commission last Wednesday and they all formally voted to approve this move. We just know that we'll get a lot more use of it. We've got so many flooding water issues that, where it is now that it's just not getting any use for it. And there's quite a bit of excitement moving it to Gardenia Park. So, um, with your permission, Bedford's going to forge ahead on that.
Bedford, anything you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you for doing it.
Yeah, my boys are excited because we love to play disc golf. Yeah.
Going to be good. All right.
Mayor, can I quickly go back? I just got a text from Ms., Ms. Alderson. She had a question about, about the trash truck. If something falls out of the trash can, who picks it up? I would say we'd have to circle back or something like that. You only have one driver.
Time for him to fix it up now, you? Who, who little house it is?
If we see it. Yeah, if we see it, we'll get it safely. Hopefully that helps.
Not going to get our truck, pick it up off the ground. But if we spill it, we will.
That's yes.
But that's inside the can that we're going to get.
Right. Commissioner Alderson, does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
All righty. Any other conversation? Being none, entertain a motion.
Do we accept the relocation of disc golf course to Gardenia Park?
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. For the audience, uh, the commission is going to go into executive session for a brief period of time. I can't tell you exactly how long it will be. We'll do our best to, uh, move along as quickly as possible, uh, and we'll be back as soon as we can.
And also since we cannot really social distance in the conference room, we're asking everybody to wear a mask.
Please wear a mask. All righty, we're ready to go back into the regular meeting again? Lori?
So any, anyone can make, you can call for motion.
We, we're willing to accept a motion?
I make a motion that we reject Mr. Petty's, uh, bid from Mr. Bristol. I mean, from, concerning Mr. Bristol with the letter dated December 2nd, 2010.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second? Any further discussion? Being none, roll call vote please, ma'am.
Mayor Harvey?
Point of order, I guess. So a yes vote is we are rejecting and no vote is we are.
You would disagree with rejecting.
Okay, thank you.
Because I can't leave.
Yeah, okay. Good question. Yeah.
All right. Mike David?
Yes.
Your wife?
Yes.
Detective Gregory?
Yes.
Willie Alderson?
Got it, you heard it.
That would be five to zero. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Ms. Willie, you need a drink. All right, uh, that being all of the regularly scheduled meeting here, we have general comments from these citizens and we have Jason Reason is asked to speak.
Am I allowed to take this off while I speak?
If you're fixed, you need to pardon.
Just easier to speak, I don't have to keep messing with them. Do you, uh, do you need my address for the record or anything?
Please, if you don't mind.
Uh, 501 North Elm Street. All right. Mayor and Commissioners, my wife Nicole and I moved to this beautiful town three years ago this month. We chose Mount Pleasant because it had a livable home that we could afford. We fell in love with Mount Pleasant because of the charm and personality we found in the small businesses, the shops and boutiques lining the downtown streets. And now I too am a business owner here in town. But let me get right to the point. Our small businesses are struggling to survive to get people, even our own residents, to come into their doors. Just this morning, another business announced that it's closing. We've lost four businesses in the last year, at least four, three specifically in the downtown area. And at some point in the latter half of this year, the downtown Main Street district is about to be turned into a construction zone. Yeah, I know the, the contractor is supposed to leave entryways accessible, but people already avoid our downtown area. How much more will people avoid it when it's like West 7th Street currently is in Columbia? Who's going to continue to patronize these places that depend on walking business? I know we're all celebrating the downtown revitalization that looms imminent. It's going to bring glorious improvements to our town. But while it's happening, it's going to be pure hell, if you'll pardon the expression, for those trying to make a living in that area. These businesses didn't ask for this. They didn't have a say in this. This was a decision of the city leadership to pursue this revitalization and it's being forced upon those who are struggling just to survive as it is. I've been told that the Main Street team has resources to help them prepare for the challenges that this presents. But honestly, I have no faith in this organization that it's, you know, it's directed by leaders who take a passive approach to communication and who take no initiative in leading the charge for our small businesses. Add to that that the Mount Pleasant Chamber of Commerce, an organization whose primary responsibility is literally to advocate for the town's commercial and, um, and economic interests. They have no money to take on this task and it's led by a board of directors who are burned out and have nothing left to give. There is no resource in this city that is taking initiative to advocate for small businesses, much less actively communicating with our small businesses to bring them together and meet their needs. So why am I saying all this tonight? My understanding is that the Board of Commissioners is preparing the budget for the next financial year. Like it or not, you, the board, have a responsibility toward our small businesses because you have approved this downtown revitalization that will surely be the kiss of death for many of our remaining small businesses. Please take this into consideration as you discuss funding that is directed toward the CDC and Main Street, the lack of funding for the Chamber of Commerce, or even the possibility of provisions that can be made for those businesses directly affected by the pending construction. I expect no answers on this tonight. I only want to see discussion begin. I am committed to advocating for our businesses and speaking up every chance I get from here on out. Expect to hear more from me in the weeks ahead. But please feel, feel free to contact me at any time to discuss more details on what is needed and what actions may truly benefit your work toward benefiting, toward the benefit of preserving the most public face of our city's charm and personality, which is our small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. I'll say this, uh, if we don't do this trunk line, the sewer trunk line, which is what's going to tear up more than anything out here right now, we're not going to have to see it.
Right.
Because we've been under a moratorium. Thank the Lord, we got out from under it by a lot of great work, by a lot of great staff members. And we don't have any choice with that.
Right.
Uh, we're very fortunate to have the grant to do the downtown revitalization. And it was just our thought, I can tell you from being on the mission for four years, is that we do both in conjunction so that we don't do one and then do the other.
Right.
That way, we do understand there's going to be an impact without question. But to try to limit it as much as possible and do it once, not twice.
Right.
Because then you would have a huge impact, not once, but twice.
Right.
I am not going to disagree with some of your comments about the other parts of the support. I have openly said some of that myself and I would encourage you to continue.
Another thing, I'm not sure if you were here at the time, Jason, but none of this was, is forced on anybody. There were all kinds of public hearings about whether or not the city should, uh, apply for these funds. So, and you can see what kind of public, people just don't come to the meetings. But, so it was, we don't, we don't apply for state funding or anything like that without getting the public's input on whether or not we should.
Right.
So that, that, that did happen in this process, although it's been four years ago when, when that did happen. And then, you know, you and I have talked at length about, uh, ways to improve the chamber, really think outside the box, maybe even change the way we do business. And then finally, the only other thing I want to offer, and I know I've shared this with you too, but the, our engineers were the same engineers that did Franklin 25 years ago. And it, it's going to be somewhat painful, but they've worked through the traffic. They've already talked about different things that they want to do for store owners and how they handle this. And the, my goal was to have all that communicated way ahead of time before streets are turned, uh, torn up so that everybody knows. And then, you know, if we, if we're, if the street is one-way this day, they know that, uh, you know, plenty of time in advance that we're all planning as best we can around it. And you even brought up some good ideas of delivery options or there's other things that we can do or maybe somebody could temporarily locate a small piece of their store where the construction's not that way, you know? I just, hopefully lots of different ideas, but communities have survived through it before, but it's been, it's, it's going to be painful.
Right.
I, you know, the commu, the community in general, I absolutely know is going to survive and it's going to thrive because of this. It's the particular aspect, these are colleagues, these, mind, these are people in the same boat I am. And I, I have the blessing of not necessarily being in their exact situation, but I see it happening. I have these discussions with people on a regular basis and it just leaves me concerned about that particular aspect. Is, is the, is the price to pay losing those people in the meantime to get this done?
Hopefully that didn't happen, Jason.
And that's mine.
You know.
And actually the city is going to be spending money to make all of these businesses ADA accessible. It, the businesses aren't paying that. The owners of the buildings aren't paying it. We're required to do that as part of this grant. So they're going to be benefiting that way.
And I definitely appreciate that that provision is being made. It's, it affects me and my wife.
Individual.
And it's required by the state and it needs to be and it's going to be required by everybody going forward.
Going forward, yeah.
For sure.
But anyway, I, I just want to see discussion happen and the more I put it out there, the more we can discuss.
You don't start, you can't finish.
Right.
Thank you all for your time.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Any of the commissioners got any other comments?
Uh, we talked about this Thursday night. I know I've said it before, but, uh, it's official. We, uh, the middle school received, uh, the TBA grant, uh, for the PBL, uh, around the flooding in the Brookside subdivision and Mockingbird, uh, and the middle school. So we have begun our PBL work around that. The kids are excited, uh, and we have, uh, Archibald and Mr. Powell are coming over one day next week to, uh, get the kids started with some ideas. And so it's, it's an exciting time there.
You've got some great videos to show them too.
Yes, uh, some great videos of the water flowing very fast, uh, out of the drain there. So that's, uh, just wanted to keep everybody up to date on that.
All right. Any other comments? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Got a motion? Got a second? All those in favor?
Thank you, Ms. Willie.
Take care, Ms. Willie.
Thank you, thank you, Father.
Well, she got to mix that.